I know that the Board of Selectment had, the Select Board had a meeting prior to ours, so I'm not sure. Do I start without them, or can we kind of pause our start?
Yeah, so we we're, we have both the, the school committee noted as a 6:30 start, so we could start our agenda if you wanted to while we're waiting for the selectmen. Unfortunately for, I think FinCom is just waiting for the joint meeting, correct me, Steve, I think that's right.
Yes, I would think so, yes.
Yeah, that's correct, Joe.
Alright, so we could at least maybe get the, the minutes and the student representative update, and then we can just stop if they come in.
Okay, and can I just ask, when they do come in, do we have to call a joint meeting to order, or?
Yeah, so you'll, you'll take a motion to leave your meeting and that you're going to be returning after the joint meeting, and then the vote that says you're opening the joint meeting.
Okay.
You can do it.
Why don't we start, call to order the school committee meeting for Thursday, October 15th, 2020, so welcome, everybody. And maybe we can start, did you, why don't we start with the minutes of September 24th? Has everyone had time to review? Questions, concerns, comments? Not seeing any, is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 24th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Dinesh?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Sherry?
Yes.
And Carolyn's a yes, and Kathleen is absent. So I can see Renee here, hi Renee.
Hello, good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Is everybody else following behind you, Renee?
Yes, they are, we just ended, so they should be here, I think I just had my email queued.
Sure, so we're going to, we had sort of started our meeting, but we will. I'm sorry, Joe, you said motion to?
You're going to motion to postpone your meeting in order to join the joint meeting, and you will return to your open meeting at the end of the joint meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to postpone our current school committee meeting in order to join the joint committee meeting to return to open committee, open school committee meeting following the joint meeting?
So moved.
Second? Thanks, and all in favor, Dinesh?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Carolyn is a yes, Kathleen is absent. So, hey, Jack?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
So, Dr. Byetta suggested that we need to call to order our own boards as part of this joint meeting, so I will start, is that's okay?
Please do.
So I would like to call to order the joint meeting with the school committee, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee. On behalf of the school committee, is there a motion, or I'm just calling to order, right, I don't need a motion?
Oh, you don't need a motion, just calling to order.
Calling to order, so, welcome, everybody, really happy that we could all get together and kind of discuss where we're at as a town and supportive one another, so, Dr. Byetta, can I turn it over to you?
Yeah, sure. So I think we're all kind of in a little angst right now, budget numbers that come out, they're pretty stable for us, nothing that was really dramatic, new information from the governor's office that we haven't been talking about for a few months. And then there's the, the issue of do, you know, how does town meeting go about with some potential weather issues, and I think Mike and Wade and others have been opining on how to deal with that, I'm going to guess the moderator as well, so I think, Mike, is it, we're waiting until tomorrow or Saturday morning, is there a call on that yet?
Trying, hold on.
While we do this, guys, I apologize.
Still muted, but yeah, go ahead.
Could someone just promote Meg Arts to panelists, please?
I think she, yeah, she's.
I think Brad might be there, too.
Mike is there, okay.
I just added Mike and Meg.
And then do you see Brad Bramwell?
I see a Brad.
Brad in attendance, yeah.
That's probably him, Jack.
Brad, I'm going to promote him as well.
If not, we'll.
If not, we'll kick him back out, that's fine.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
So, Joe, in answer to your question, we want to see if we can meet at 10 o'clock Saturday morning, right now it looks like the rain's going to end Saturday morning earlier, and so we'd like to see if we could have a meeting at 10 o'clock on, at the high school and see if we can get things set up.
Alright. So, then the second part of this really becomes the articles, which I don't know if there's a lot of, I know, Mike, I'll defer to you and Stephen to you as the chair of the FinCom, I don't know if there's motions have been made and passed in terms of supplementals and so on and so forth, I guess there are some significant article, other articles that really don't pertain to my office, I'll defer to you guys on that. But, as we look, if I could just speak real quickly, and then the other discussion on FY21 articles, if they impact the schools, I don't know, but in terms of the supplementals right now, the governor's office release of this week, I actually went through it and spoke to Mike this morning, it's pretty much what we established in terms of the cut to the 72,000, which was the SOA, the Student Opportunity Act, we anticipated that cut coming forward, in fact, it did, except it came in at 62,000 instead of 72,000, which was interesting. There was some flexibility in the charter school payments, I don't know where Southeastern landed, so Mike, I'd have to defer to that in terms of, you know, if they're going to be coming later for more funds, I don't think so, based on the way I read it, but again, I can't speak to them, and then lastly, going forward, based on the governor's proposal for the remainder of this year, I think there's a big question mark on what's, what's going to happen with the federal government, and as far as I know, I have no I have no faith that anything's coming from the feds right now. So I think that will mean that in terms of our budget, our budget is frozen, except and has been frozen for over three weeks. In terms of expenditures, expenditures have to come through Matt and my office, and right now those are health and safety issues. Only, our biggest issue continues to be the filling, backfilling of teachers because of FMLA now related, or in the next few months going to be related to maternity leaves and paternal leaves. Paternal leaves, I think we're going to see an increase, and the reason for that is the doctors are signing off that COVID, it can be a situation for young, for children, specifically those born, and so comments like, you know, the child's lungs aren't fully mature yet, if you will, or aren't fully to the level they're supposed to be, those are the types of things that we're starting to hear, so that's going to cause some stress on paternal leaves and maternity, maternity leaves, maternity leaves, I think, will increase in terms of the time that people will be away, doctors are signing off consistently that once the, the person is getting closer to the birth of the child with COVID numbers spiking, we're starting to see, and again, spiking meaning spiking in general, not necessarily spiking in Norton, we're starting to see that those requests are going to be longer, so the way that it works is you have FMLA, which will go on at the same time as their sick bank, their individualized sick bank, but then they have the right with medical documentation to continue to use their sick bank. After the utilization of all of their sick bank, then they have the right to apply to the actual employee sick bank, so as you can see, this is just a constant potential for employees who could be out anytime from in September when we started, all the way through literally June 30th. And so that's, that's the biggest nightmare on the school side in terms of our day-to-day operating budget needs going forward. The supplemental will get us to backfill two of the areas, one was transportation, the other one was educational services contract. We're trying to zero out as much of our substitute situation by just literally backfilling, we're running, as you all know, we're running a school within a school model right now, that could be going all year, that could eventually be only remote. Remote does potentially save us money. Hybrid and remote at the same time do not. So just to put that out there in terms of the actual big question mark for the school department going forth. If the feds do come forward with something, and it's done in the way that most of us would like to see it, which is to come back into the general fund and/or direct, in our case, directly to us, past the 31st, because remember, right now, all of the federal funding ends on the 31st, all the PPE, all of the $225 per student that we got through the state, all of that ends on the 31st, so the big market becomes what happens for payment from January to June. And then lastly, we will see an increase in special education. It is, there's some significant social, emotional, in my day, mental health today, we call it social, emotional needs, we are seeing these types of issues increase, and these are not $20,000 or $30,000 placements, these are six-figure placements, not including transportation. These are residential, these are day schools, we're going to see an increase in that, we're having some deep discussions already about trying to create our own, if you will, or trying to do the right thing within our district instead of just having students going out, but the social emotional well-being of students currently is a, is a concern, so is a staff issue for us, and then we have a, an issue in terms of, in terms of student needs and supports. And added to that is whatever model we are in for the rest of this year and/or for only a period of time is everything to do with direct service delivery around ELL 504, special education, these, those are three core areas where the delivery model, as it changes, has a potential financial negative impact. Right now, parents choose the model that they want, per DESI. So I can call a parent and say, I'd like to give you four times a week because we can do a better delivery of the service, and the parent can say, well, no, that causes a situation for us in terms of how to deliver the service via a virtual situation like this, in terms of speech, OTPT, nursing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so that's the kind of big picture update. Our goal is, in my discussions with Steve a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, as the chair, is to, as we file our reports with the school committee on a monthly basis, we will send them to Steve to share with the rest of the committee, and then questions and answers can come via email or request for more information, that type of stuff as we go, and then lastly, we are working to try to figure out issues around transportation that could potentially cost us money, but just realize that these service delivery contracts through the state are very fixed, and that's the biggest issue, as you know, from the spring. We're hoping, right now, we are utilizing our Bloom Transportation to support us with getting food out to students, the feds, and correctly, Matt, the feds have come out with free and reduced, basically for anyone who wants to have it through June 30th.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's going to be actually, could be a very good positive for us because the actual funding coming in could actually completely offset that cost, maybe even put a couple of dollars away for long-term planning within the kitchens in terms of physical capital needs. The problem that we're having is we just don't have a lot of people who want to apply for that, so we're trying to really push with family, hey, you don't have to bring lunch, you can get a lunch at no cost to you, just show up, you know, the prior week, you got to go online, sign up for what you want, and we feed you, and you don't have to take out any, any funds, so we're hoping to make a big push over the next few weeks with that to see if we can climb those numbers up. That's it for me.
Thanks, Joe, I don't know if anybody has any comments or questions. I think that everybody is struggling during COVID, and I think we're seeing the struggles, of course, using our kind of school lens. I'm sure the struggles are real for everybody, but just wanted to really give you kind of an overview and an update of kind of the balancing act and some of the concerns and some of the, you know, the needs that need to be addressed, so. I'm not sure if anybody else has comments.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
When can we expect to see some numbers, I got everything that Joe said, but when can we see some numbers on paper that we have a billion-dollar problem, we have a $500,000 problem, whatever, you know, you know, you're muted, Joe, if you're trying to talk.
Thanks, Zach, sorry about that, I'll defer to Matt on timelines, we did send a pretty specific report out, I don't know if everybody's gotten it yet for the end of the year and then beginning of the year, but I'll defer to Matt for a schedule so that you folks all have that information.
Yeah, so probably about a couple of weeks ago, we did send out, I think I sent it to Steve and Amy, the, the end-of-year financials and our current status, where we're at at this point in time, so that packet, I can resend it if we, if we didn't receive it, I'm happy to send it out again, and then each month, we will continue to report along the same lines so that we kind of understand where we are with all of our expenditures.
Matt, we did receive that, it's been forwarded to the committee, the one question I have for you is, can we set a deadline on when we will receive that, end of the following month?
Can I answer that?
That's not available.
Yeah, so Steve, our goal is to take it to the second meeting of the school committee every month, which will bring up the prior month's information, so you'll get October's in the second week, the second meeting in November, if we don't have a second meeting, then we'll just send it to you. And that's just so that, so that, because what, as you know, with the business model, you're, you're trying to update that at the same time that you're creating already the next month, because it's a constant flow, so we have to have a drop dead drop date, if you will.
Oh, makes sense, thank you.
Anything else? Not seeing anything, Dr. Byetta, I'm going to turn it over to you again to talk about the discussion on the train bid.
And I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Wells. Thank you. So yeah, our evaluation team has completed looking through all the proposals, all the, all the firms that submitted proposals were seen as qualified. The most qualified bid that we looked at was the one from Train Commercial Systems. All three evaluators agreed on that, the next steps in the process is we send a written confirmation to Train, letting them know that they've been selected, and then they will, we will put together the audit contract, which is pretty standard, it was part of the bid packet, and we'll start moving pretty quickly into the audit of all the buildings. If anyone has any concerns about that, let us know, but we're ready to move forward.
Just from a high-level perspective, how many bids do we actually receive?
We received three, I think if I'm correct, we had at least five or six that were real bidders that were interested and requested the proposals, but they just didn't submit on this project, but we did receive three.
And can you just give a, just this, this is what, an energy audit on potential efficiencies that will go through the school buildings, is that?
Yeah, so what, what the ESCO project is, is it is, you're, you're creating a partnership with a company that looks at your energy services and provides projects that will improve upon those energy services, and then as part of that, that creation of the projects, there's a savings that they, they guarantee that will be generated from the project, and then you use those future savings to fund the project, so it's really a way to do some capital upgrades on your HVAC systems, roofs, some electrical and solar, without having to tax your capital, your capital projects, and it utilizes the actual savings that they generate. If you hit a year where they don't, it doesn't hit that savings, they guarantee the savings, so the firm then cuts you a check that closes the gap on those savings, so. And what you're really signing up for is you're creating a 20-year relationship with this company, it's a 20-year timeframe that you're signed up with this company, so over the next 20 years, you will just continuously be looking at energy efficiency projects, they will recommend them, they will give you a full sort of a project management aspect of it, let you know what the savings is, you look at the project, determine if it's something that is feasible for the district and the municipality, and then you move forward with it.
Steve, just for clarification, the bid went out for the town and school buildings, not just the schools.
That is correct, we, we tried to get every building onto that, the bid, so that even though some of those buildings may not have energy efficiency projects planned for them ever, or not in the near future, we wanted to make sure we had them in there so that if 10, 15 years down the road, we look at a building and say, yeah, let's do a project on this, we wanted to have it in that bid, so we actually could do that project.
And do you have an executive summary of the cost-benefit analysis they gave over the 20 years, what we can expect, I assume, I assume that's what the voting on this was when you said to move forward with a specific vendor?
Well, what you really do is, they, they, they give you sort of a sampling of projects that they've done around, so for example, like Dyden Rehoboth, Dyden Rehoboth has done $12 million worth of projects that generated $18 million worth of savings for the schools, so I can get, I can certainly share a few of those projects with you, so you can kind of see that what we, we expect to what they can actually do for you if you really move forward with all the projects, but the savings is really going to depend on, like, when we look at these projects and we what are we going to move forward with, we can't guarantee what all of our, what all of our projects are going to save, because we don't know what projects we're going to move forward with.
And is it unusual, now, maybe I'm taking it too literal, where we're saying it's a train agreement, a specific company agreement, is that unusual, because they're going to be shopping their own products only? And do you know that all of those will fit our current needs or our future needs, if you will?
Yes, so when you sign on with the firm, definitely, that, that's one of the things that when, when you sign on with the company, you do end up purchasing their products, they, they give you a pretty good cut rate on it, and that's how they kind of help to generate those savings, because they know they have guaranteed work with you for at least 20 years. You know, if you had signed on, if the company was Honeywell, Honeywell would be moving their products towards you as well, so. Where you're really saving on it is that you have that relationship with that company, so if something goes wrong with the product, you know, over the next five or 10 years, they're, they haven't gone away, they're still here. They're your sort of your strategic partner for the next 20 years.
In, in the projects that you guys reviewed, I know it's a fairly new concept, this kind of energy audit, if you will, for, for this type of project, but how would those relationships work, did people exit it after so many years where if Train is frustrated, they can leave, and now you're kind of stuck with Train products potentially somewhere down the line and cost more to retrofit, if you will?
So the references that we spoke with, which were multiple, multiple different districts around the state of Massachusetts, even with, with the companies that we didn't go with, everyone has been really happy with the relationship that they've had with the company. Nobody has moved on that we spoke to has moved away from that company within that timeframe, they've been, the relationship's been great, and there's a lot of energy to want to make this work on both sides of, of the game, so they, they definitely, they work hard to make you happy, and, and for the most part, what I've been seeing from the savings versus cost, it's, it's pretty significant for the, for the municipalities.
Steve, is it?
Because I think it was the city of Quincy that had issues where that didn't, where this type of a project didn't work out, so.
Yeah, and the city of Quincy's, to Steve, and I happened to be the next-door neighbor at the time, as superintendent, the city of Quincy's number, number one issue is the way that they went after the bid process, because it ended up costing them, I believe, the, the actual cost to do the work and the payout was about a million dollars short, if I remember correctly, I don't want to misspeak. There's two, there's two areas that are problematic on the school side, and I would argue even on the town side, but I'll let Mike speak to it, every project that I do within a building is going to require an architect and a project manager, right away, that increases our cost. When you're going through a, a situation of, for example, if, let's say we're putting a new roof on a building, and I'm going through the MSBA process because we're getting some type of money back, you'll actually see that the cost through the MSBA process and the potential with Train can almost be zeroed out, because the money that you're saving, the idea goes right back into that payment, so you're not taking it from capital. So you don't have to worry about coming forward and saying, well, I need $250,000 every year for the next X number of years because of HVAC systems or so on and so forth. The big issue for us on the school side, and I would argue on the town side, is having that relationship stops us from having to utilize low-bid requirements for the hiring of technicians when something does go wrong. We constantly just go back to the company that you're using, you don't have to go out and bid yet again. One of our biggest issues here, when I got here seven years ago, and I think Wade's on the call, without using names of companies, because I don't want to be negative, but what I was seeing was six-figure costs to fix HVAC systems, and I didn't even understand why we were spending that type of money, and so we bid out, and we were lucky enough to win with someone else. That constant turnover of who is your vendor is, is, in my opinion, very problematic because of who knows how to use, who knows how to work with those systems, but be the understanding part of this audit is that these people will now go through your public buildings in the town. There's a cost for that. If you, in fact, complete projects, you don't actually pay that cost for the audit. So you can then work towards projects, for example, we might say that we want to do a solar project for the high school because we want to do solar panels at the high school, or we want to do, I was going to say windows, but windows is not a good one, because we just did them. Any of those projects that are outlined by the Board of Selectment and the School Committee become the projects that we actually move forward on that take the money that's saved within the operational budget and move it towards the payment of the actual cost of the project. And to me, that's where this procurement process and the way that it's done, and having companies that are working with you for long periods of time on the very products that they put in your buildings makes sense, it's also full, full competitive wage, it doesn't walk around, like, you know, this, the, the idea that you're paying less, they're using all the competitive wages that you still have to use as a community with labor and so on and so forth, it doesn't walk around that, what it does, though, is it takes you out of just a low-bid process.
Thanks, Joe. Mike, can I ask, Matt, I'm sorry, Matt, can I ask, Mike, so Mike, what are you doing on the, the town side, I mean, is it all being done through Matt or for the town buildings, and if there are new buildings, do they just roll into bid as well or so forth?
You're muted. You're muted.
On the new buildings, Matt, we only committed to the buildings that we currently were part of the bid.
So, yeah, so what we do is we put the town hall and the senior center on there with their current square footage, and I did ask that question that, you know, we're moving forward, and we're going to have, you know, potentially new buildings that we build, how does that play into this when we have a 20-year relationship with this company, and because we have them on there, when we transition into, if we transition to a new town hall and a new senior center, then they just get added on because we had them on that original bid, they just sort of get added. So, you know, looking 10 years down the road where some of the systems might fail on, on new buildings, they'll be able to come in and help us out with that, because we did have them on the original bid, at least as far as the, the original buildings go.
And I have one other question, do we have a, does this, by being in this contract, does this take us out of, if the state decides or the government decides later on down the road, rebates or anything like that, does it just go through Train, or does it, or does it?
Yeah, that's part of what they help us with, they'll, they'll help us shop through all those rebates, so they have, they have a division that looks at all of this and finds all those little pieces of money that you can grab onto and utilize for your projects.
Mike, to you and to Steve as well, I was asking the questions, Matt, is it possible to provide the Board of Selectmen, excuse me, the Select Board and the FinCom, an electronic copy of what this audit looks like in terms of how it was scored, what they said they would potentially be doing? Can we, can we, is it, do we have it electronically, I guess is the question?
Yeah, yeah, the, the actual, the, the scoring, you mean, the evaluation scoring?
That, and the actual proposal.
We can do this, yeah, the scoring's real easy, I can get that off tomorrow morning, I have it already electronically. The proposal is a bound book, so, I mean, we can do it, we'll just have to tear it apart and, and force it through the machine.
Can we, can we reach out to the company and ask them for an electronic copy, I'd be shocked if they don't have one. Can we, can we reach out to the company and ask them for an electronic copy? I'd be shocked if they don't have one.
Yeah, yeah, that's no problem, because we're going to reach out to them anyway, so.
If we can get that to the both committees, we'll release it to the both of you as soon as we can. If we can't, if we can't get an answer from them, then we'll we'll cut and paste and run it to our machines and it'll just take a little longer to get it to you. I I'll be surprised if they don't have it electronically.
Yeah, we may even have it somewhere in the packet, too. Um, I know they supplied a a couple of flash drives, so I can look at those.
And just just to confirm, so both sides, the school side and the town side, view this in all in agreement, and then my other follow-up to that is what would the process be for selecting the projects we move forward? Is it going to be a a town team that reviews those proposals to move forward, or is it one group of people versus another? How does that work?
Well, there's the, there's a couple of different potentials that I would defer to Mike units on. There's the potential that the Select Board and the School Committee come together and prioritize whatever that project might be, and then there's the Permanent Building Committee.
Yeah, nor- normally with districts, they add, once the audit is complete, they give you a listing of all the projects they think are going to have high value for you. And then, uh, in a lot of districts or municipalities, uh, then it's just sort of the the town manager and the superintendent work together, bring it to the Select Board and and talk about those projects of what makes the most sense moving forward.
Any large-scale items, um, should run through the Building Committee? So if if that, the same information, um, that Matt's going to send us, we can share with the Building Committee so they have that, so they know what they're talking about.
So if you take, like, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but if you take this information, Mike units, if you take this information from these type of utility audits, as I just call them, maybe that's the wrong phrase, and you take a look at the window envelope review that's being done, every single one of our public buildings in town will have the most up-to-date information for what I think the FinCom's been asking a lot about, which is some long-term fiscal planning. And to me, the only way to really do that is to, if you don't have the resource inside, you got to bring the resource from the outside. Unfortunately, you have to pay for it, which is always a cost. I would argue that there's a potential that that cost could be absorbed by capital, um, as we've done with other things. Um, and then make a decision between the Boards, the Building Committee for the bigger projects um, around which one should be prioritized. Um, and to me, that then also establishes long-term debt for the town, if there's a potential for that. But more than likely, long-term savings that you can see within an operating budget, that is paying, help to paying off that cost.
And, um, the Building Committee, uh, should be involved because I know that they have money that was appropriated to do an envelope study that they've been holding. Um, wait to see what happens, uh, with this, so. They may not need that.
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remembered the bid process, if you hire a company, whoever they are, and there's a cost to that. If you, in fact, begin your projects, there is actually no cost for the audit, if I remember that correctly.
Right, so the I, the audit is, uh, i- if you were to just do this this audit and then walk away from the project, um, you're looking at about, you know, thirty-three thousand dollars you'd have to pay for the audit. However, if you now take those projects and start moving forward, there is no, you don't pay that thirty-three thousand dollars. You just continue with the projects knowing and that they knowing that that twenty-year relationship is there and working through the projects, it it it, they make, they make money off of the project. They do. Um, so, yeah, the the audit no longer is a a check that you have to write at that point.
So, Matt, there's no timeframe? It's just as long as we start the projects within twenty years? Or or is there a limit? Like, uh, like, do we have to do twenty percent of the recommended projects?
Um, I think that, you know, they're going to have, when when we go through the audit, we'll we'll determine how many projects we want to do. Um, I think every every municipality is different. Uh, I did ask that question. I said, you know, what if we do, you know, like a project this year, we we decide on a project that we like and we move forward with it? And then, uh, F, say, in in FY twenty-two, it becomes a really difficult financial year for for the town. Can we not do a project in that year? And they said, yeah, that's fine. Uh, you can, you can not do the project, and it's not going to be any kind of a negative impact on you. So it's, um, you're just, you're just setting up and really what it is to try and save money for the district. You know, obviously, the the firm you're working with wants to make some money as well, working with you. Um, so it becomes that relationship of balancing those two together.
Mike, if if we had to pay for this, could that money that was allocated for the envelope study be used for this, or would we have to go back to town meeting for approval?
If, um, you can, if it's going to be used for something other than envelope study, you would have to go back to town meeting to, uh, transfer it out.
And the audit wouldn't count as an envelope study?
Well, that, that's what, um, I, that's why I think we should, uh, sit down with the Building Committee with that information so they can see.
Great, thanks, guys.
Matt, just my my last question. It's just twenty years seems like a long time. Is that the only option?
But that's how the 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 procurement is set up, the the way the the law runs. It is, it's a twenty-year relationship, which does seem like a long time. Um, except that, um, you know, i- it's harder when you're going out every couple of years and finding another low bidder. Um, and then, and then when they they walk away at the end of it, after the warranty period's over, and it's, it's really difficult at that point, so. Although it does seem like a long time, it's probably going to go very fast.
Thank you. Appreciate the work on this.
Sure.
So I think, um, that was all that we had sort of on our agenda for the joint meeting. I'm not sure, um, if the Select Board or the Finance Committee had any other topics to discuss. Being none. Um, so I just want to say it's such a pleasure to kind of get together and to work collaboratively to all be on the same page so that we know what each other is doing. We're sort of not on our own islands, kind of trying to survive by ourselves. Um, really kind of working as a community and as a team, so I appreciate everybody's time and effort um, to come together and to make sure that if you have any questions about more on public schools or about, um, what we're working on, certainly, um, between Dr. Byetta, Matt, Wade, there's always somebody who, um, can answer those questions or certainly us on the School Committee, so. Thanks, everyone. Um, Dr. Byetta, do I, uh, need to have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Oh, Madam Chair, if I?
Oh, sorry, Jack, sorry.
No, so I was rushing back to my computer while you were, uh, asking for for additional items. Uh, I love these. I think these are great. Um, I'd like to schedule our next one now while we're here. I think it's really important to keep these going and rather than scheduling them on the fly and trying to, I think if we look out until January and pick a day, it gives people, this becomes something to schedule around as opposed to try to squeeze in.
Sure.
That that works for everybody. Could we do maybe mid-January, a Thursday there?
It certainly does.
And I agree. I think that makes sense. You just have to see the commitments that we have and show your forms, that kind of thing. So it makes sense.
So what about, we propose Thursday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one?
Is there a holiday around that, Jack?
Um, MLK Day is the following week.
I don't foresee that being a problem with the School Committee.
And we can, we can move our, we, if we already, I don't, I don't have the calendar in front of me. If we have to move our meeting to that same night so that we can just do it instead of having an extra night, we can easily do that.
So that worked for us.
The twenty-first, Joe.
Say again?
We do have one scheduled the twenty-first.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll be in the height of budget season for us in terms of putting our budgets together and everything else, so I I don't see that as a, moving it to the fourteenth. I don't see that as a problem.
Yeah, that definitely works for us, so we can certainly, um, mark that in our calendars, Jack. I think that's a great option. Um, and I really appreciate, I think, working together and sort of keeping each other um, updated on what what is sort of happening is a really great idea, so. We will mark January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one is our next joint committee meeting. Um, includes of us as the School Committee, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, School Committee would be a motion to adjourn, um, the joint meeting and return to your regular, um, meeting.
So for the School Committee, is there a motion to adjourn the current joint meeting to return to our in-progress School Committee meeting? Second?
Second.
Thanks. Um, all in favor? Dinesh?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Carolyn, I'm a yes. So, thanks, everybody. We will, um, see you on Saturday.
Yes, thank you so much.
Really appreciate you taking time to join us. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Take care all. Bye bye.
Bye, everyone.
Guys, bye bye.
Madam Chair, it's seven ten, and, uh, your next item on the agenda is student representatives, and thank you to the students for being so patient and, um, and, uh, listening in to town politics.
Thank you very much. So, um, I think Malia and Zoe both are here, right? Or, yes, I see you both, so I will turn it over to you for a student update.
Hi, so we got, um, so we emailed all the principals again, and we got responses from the JCS, the LGN, the YO, and believe that was it, so, um, we have from the JCS, I emailed Fulton, and she said, hi, at JCS, students have been busy working on reading and writing workshops. We're also completing fall assessments and reading and math. Staff and students are grateful for the beautiful weather we've had so far this fall, which has allowed us to go outside for breaks and also for classroom lessons. And for the LGN, um, Mrs. Luke said that the LGN has been a very busy place the past few weeks. Our flu clinic started today for cohort one and will continue tomorrow for cohort two. Students earned a special reward for filling our Purple Heart Bucket as a school. Students earned hearts for being respectful, responsible in this school. We celebrated with the Norton Friday, which we love to hear. And students wore their purple and/or Norton gear on October first cohort one and October second cohort two. And then we have the YO. And, um, Mr. Gigan said that students continue to do an excellent job of working in school and with their at-home learning, and that they're so proud of everything they've been doing. They're doing an incredible job with keeping their masks on, keeping their distance, and doing all the things we're asking them to do. The, uh, the YO PTO Executive Board has met again last week, and they'll have their first full PTO meeting next Wednesday at seven PM through Zoom. He said that they're all just so impressed with all the work that everyone is doing to make sure that their students are learning, are learning, are safe, and are happy. Teachers and staff have done a wonderful job, and they hope to keep this good.
Um, we also got some feedback from the Distance Learning Academy. Um, they said that the students have gotten used to the new learning platforms, and they also said that they had a family Q and A. Um, and they answered questions, and they'll be implementing some tweaks to make the program more robust for all the students. Um, for the middle school, although we didn't get it from the principal, we, um, reached out to some of the kids, and they talked about that. Um, Mr. Hayward is telling all the kids that if they have any good news or achievements that they can tell him, and he'll announce it to the whole school and the announcements. Um, so it's spreading lots of positivity around the school. Um, for the high school, the seniors had their spirit week. I don't know was before or after the last school committee meeting, but they had a spirit week, so it was kind of fun to see them all dress up. Um, soccer and cross-country are going well, and they're all wearing masks, which some kids are complaining, some are not, but they're getting used to it. They're just glad they can actually do it. Um, then we also had, um, the student survey talk about. Um, so a lot of kids voiced their opinions on what they thought about more negative feedback on the remote days. Um, there was, for me personally, I feel like on my remote days, the teachers are signing a lot more work, so I feel like I'm starting my work at eight and like, I'm not done until like past dinnertime, so I think there's still some things that could be, like, fixed with that because it's just, they want to kind of mimic the school day, but I think like even in a school day, they might have like lesson plans, and they'll be like, oh, like, you can't fit this into the schedule today. We'll do it the next day. Well, you're at home, you can't do that, so. I think it's still, it's going well overall, but that's just one thing I've noticed.
It's, it's the same kind of for me where I feel like, for the most part, the remote days where I'm home, Tuesdays and Thursdays go fine. They're trying to mimic like, not a normal school day, but something that can replicate how it would run normally. But I think the biggest issue is the remote Mondays for the high school, because you have classes from around eight in the morning to twelve in in the afternoon-ish. And then you're given the same amount of work you'd get on a Tuesday or a Thursday or for the other cohort, a Wednesday or a Friday, to do before four o'clock in that span of time. So you're getting sometimes seven hours of work, eight hours of work, especially if you're in higher-level classes, which is, it's very overwhelming, so you can see that reflected in the student survey that we went over, but. Other than that, I think everything else is running pretty smoothly there, so. Could be worse.
I think what we're learning, um, Zoe and Malia, is really kind of how different this is um, from what has always been traditional education. And I think, um, the feedback that we've been receiving, so you mentioned that there was a student survey. Um, there's also going to be, there was a meeting, um, on Tuesday night for our, um, fully remote families. There's a meeting next week for our hybrid families. There's also a s- a meeting for our special ed families, um, next week. So we're gathering a lot of data, um, and there also was a survey that, um, went out to faculty, um, to staff. So we know that, you know, we're getting a lot of, um, input. I think, um, Dr. Byetta, you, I think, would agree that the Tuesday night meeting really offered a lot of insights, um, really thoughtful, um, suggestions and ideas of how to, you know, take what is happening and maybe kind of tweak it a little bit. I think everybody is also aware, and it's why it's so helpful for us to hear this information, is that, um, we are getting close, believe it or not, to that six-week mark. We had said when we voted as a school committee to move towards a hybrid model that we were going to absolutely do, um, a a really kind of deep dive into how things were going at the sixth, at the six-week mark. And we are really close to six weeks. I'm not sure if anybody realizes that we've been um, muddling through the the sort of process for almost six weeks, so there's a lot of things happening behind the scenes. Um, to really think about what's going really well, because there is a lot going really well. And maybe things that maybe we can, um, tweak a little bit, maybe help move, um, forward a little bit. So we do appreciate you being kind of the eyes and ears for, um, your student population for really, um, letting us know your thoughts about and what you're hearing and also, um, what students are telling you, so. Thank you, and it is really nice to see that there are a lot of good things happening. I know it's been crazy um, wearing masks in school and just being in school so little. It's just one thing after another, but it's so nice. Um, I do drop off at the high school for my daughter. Um, it's just really nice to see kids walking into the building, um, masks on. Um, I don't see too many kids fountering with their masks. They just put them on and in they go, and, um, it's really nice. And if I had, um, my dreams come true, kids would be in school more, right? Because that's, I think kids really miss it, believe it or not, so. Not sure, Joe, if you have any comments?
Just really quick, so the, both Malia and Zoe, that you know, uh, this week I released, uh, to Principal Dahlman, um, all of the supplementals, meaning clubs and activities, um, for teachers to begin to look at how to, um, organize those in a virtual setting. Um, and so that, so that students have other opportunities after school besides the couple of sports that we have right now. Um, so I I hope to be hearing from, uh, the principal about how those are going to go, so that we can get schedules out to students and get some of those organizations, um, and clubs and activities up and running. Social distancing, probably masks, uh, and probably virtual, but still the idea to get you guys back involved with that stuff.
Anybody? I'm sorry, go ahead, Malia. Sorry, Malia.
Oh, it's okay. Um, I think that a lot of teachers and club leaders are definitely trying right now. I see, especially at the high school. They're trying to think of ways to to do things outside and do this and do that, and I have some teachers who will lead a class outside, and I even have, I have one club leader who has been meeting virtually with us for the past couple of like weeks and stuff, and she discusses with us just like what we would do if the club was normally there, and, you know, we get together and talk about like all the craziness going on. I think that's something that. And, you know, we get together and talk about like all the craziness going on. I think that's something that should be recognized because some teachers are trying really hard to make their students feel as comfortable as well during this time, even though nothing's really comfortable, but they're trying, you know?
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Well, thanks, Zoe and Malia. We will really appreciate your updates as we continue to move further and see how things progress. We're all keeping our fingers crossed that after watching the news tonight and hearing that Massachusetts is heading towards becoming fully red again, that we can maybe make some choices that will keep us safe and healthy. So, thanks. So on the agenda, there is an area for warrants. Will we, should we do warrants?
Yes, please.
Sheri, I will turn that over to you.
I have reviewed and approved the following warrant, September 25th, 2020, $380,188.50. And October 7th, 2020, $563,879.79. I wish to enter them into public record.
Thanks, Sheri. So, first reading of the district personnel travel policy during COVID-19. Dr. Byetta?
Thank you. For the executive order of the Governor of Massachusetts, I'm requesting that the committee consider this COVID-19 period-only personnel travel policy, which includes that any Massachusetts residents returning home to self-quarantine for 14 days or producing negative COVID-19 test result that has been administered up to 72 hours prior to their arrival in Massachusetts. This is related to the governor saying that if you're going to a high zone, this is what he's requiring. The exemptions from COVID-19 are low-risk states. They currently include Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, New York, and Connecticut. This does not apply to transitory travel. In other words, a person who lives in Rhode Island but works for us. This does not apply to work or school. This does not apply to patients who have to go to a doctor, including having to go see a loved one. And this does not include military and this does not include critical workers. So those are the exemptions and those are found right on the link that you can go to. This is not an approval. I am not telling you, you, yes, you can go somewhere. That's not what this is saying. What this is saying, so nobody's getting an approval from the superintendent to go somewhere. You're simply being told at least a week's prior would be recommended that you understand and acknowledge the governor's requirement as you return to work as an employee. And then it has the date of submission, the employee's name, the school, the title, contact number, and then location of travel and projected dates. We, we recognize, I recognize that there are emergency situations that happen all of the time, the unfortunate loss of a loved one, you know, in a red state and so on and so forth. We would, of course, attempt our best to work with any of those types of situations. But again, this is not a permission. This is not an employer or the superintendent trying to tell you what to do. This is simply saying that the governor does have a request in writing. It's actually up to a $500 fine. I don't know how they administered that, but just as a policy from the state, and we're asking the committee to consider utilizing that during the COVID-19 situation.
Is the draft that you gave us, I did review it, is that directly, is that state language?
Yeah, so that's state language and then it came through the School Committee Association and a bunch of other school districts. Literally, everybody's cutting and pasting. We want to make sure that people understand that this is not a permission, that this is literally a actual factual piece of information, because people do come back into a building and if they are positive or in any situation like that, there's a total impact in the school community. And so that's, that's the real focus here. And you do not need a vote tonight. This is just your first reading, your second reading. You take the formal vote at your next school committee meeting on the 29th.
Joe, can I, can I ask on that? This seems extremely straightforward and boilerplate. Is there a reason for a second reading? I mean, I would feel pretty comfortable voting tonight, quite frankly.
I would as well.
Yeah, policies require two readings so that the public, once they receive it and it's formally out there, they can comment on it and come to you and say, "We disagree with this. We don't want this. We don't want that. Why are you doing this and so on?" That's the reason why policy is open. Sorry.
So just, just like situationally, this would be used like if a staff member is traveling to be on vacation or to a conference or something? This isn't like...
Could be for anything. Could be for anything that they're traveling, except for the exemptions that I noted earlier.
Okay. That, that's, I was reading it as, well, if they're gonna go to a conference, then we need this, but...
We're not, right now, we're not, well, I guess anybody could go to a conference if they want to and take a personal day, but right now, we're not approving conferences and all the conferences in education are virtual.
Alright, that's fine. Thank you.
I think a lot of, I, I don't know, I shouldn't say a lot. I know that some of the safe states don't allow people from Massachusetts to their states. So that's sometimes not even an option to be going to a safe state unless you've quarantined for two weeks or quarantined for seven days with a negative test result. So I'm not sure that sadly, you don't always even have the option if you're just doing something as kind of a getaway weekend. The safe states might not even be an option.
And for the record...
For Massachusetts residents.
For the record, if the governor were to announce a change to the second executive order, I would be coming back to the committee to make that change as well. When, again, this is not, we're not trying to overreach ourselves as an employer. We're simply trying to stay as safe as we can by simply knowing where people are, if in fact, they're following the governor's order.
Well taken. We will definitely, we will review this again at our next school committee meeting. Perfect. Thank you. We'll move on to the discussion and vote on superintendent's goals.
So again, this is per boilerplate that we normally do. There's only one change that I, was a typo and it was my fault. That is under goal number one. The action item there is for October 30th.
Right.
But, but to let you know, we've, we've met that deadline already. I just gave ourselves a 30. We actually came to an agreement this week, so. But if you could just note that it's October 30th and the second change was the goal number four within October 30th and I released, I'm releasing information tomorrow to the staff to consider and reaching out to some folks, including the school committee for the task force. So I just need a motion and a vote.
So, is there a motion to approve the current superintendent goals as written?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Dinesh?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Carolyn, the yes.
Thank you.
Review and vote on Coach's Handbook. Aaron?
Yeah, so we began this process, which seems like a year ago, back in January of last year. I know, School Committee, Dr. Byetta, you wanted myself and Ethan to put together basically a Coach's Handbook that drew from the Portrait of a Graduate, how we looked at fundamentally, how we would look at coaching, but it also took from the MIA Handbook, our Athletic Handbook. We kind of combined all three of those things to put together what we think is a a robust but not overwhelming Coach's Handbook that really puts the emphasis on coaching through more of an educational lens than just being out there as a coach and trying to win all the time, more like, how are we gonna build the whole student?
So that, Madam Chair, through you to the rest of the committee, the intent here, I just want to add, add a couple of things. The intent here is a clear communication of expectations, if you will, in terms of what our goals and philosophy is. This is not an evaluation. That is a different process that the school committee and the NTA will be working on as part of a negotiable situation during negotiations. Both sides have actually already talked about that prior to COVID coming into play and we, and, and taking a bunch of things off the table and coming to a one-year agreement. We'll be coming back to the table of which Mr. Sevass and Ms. Gallagher, you both are members of. So this is, this is like an employee handbook where we can go, what our philosophy is, is how we want to make sure that communication and the hierarchy and the triangulation of that is important. Coaches know where they can go when they feel that they're being stressed by a situation or vice versa. And, and also a way for addressing complaints before they become what I would call big-ticket items, no different than what happens in the classroom. You don't go to the superintendent or the building principal. I should say, you shouldn't go to the superintendent and the building principal about a complaint about your child in the classroom. You should go directly to the teacher and offer, "Hey, I'm, I'm not happy with X, Y, and Z." Then you go to an assistant principal or principal. Then you go potentially to my office, which as you all know, does not happen very often. But I think the last part of it is to really brand a philosophy of what we want to do, especially because of our attachment to SEL and the Portrait of a Graduate. That, you know, the, the, the idea of, of coaching is the same definition in many ways as teaching. There is not much of a difference in that, in that definition, in my opinion. I've actually used the idea of coaching in the classroom. And, and, and we actually have coaches who work for us, helping teachers in the classroom. You know, a digital learning specialist is potentially a coach. They're there to help our teachers become better at instructional technology, our reading folks, our literacy specialists. They're there to help the adults who then turn around and help the students. So it's the same philosophy here. There's no hidden agenda in this. It's straightforward. And then the other process will take place as part of a totally negotiable situation that both sides know has to happen in that format. Does require a vote of the school committee?
Sure. Before we vote, I just wanted to make a comment. So Aaron, I know that you worked a lot on this handbook at the request of Norton as a SEL district. And certainly, I worked with you. You were really very gracious to kind of hear the, the kind of thoughts about how we can take our SEL philosophy onto the athletic fields and complexes and really just think about, it's not just about the wins, although those are really nice. It's about the whole child, right? So if I'm not mistaken, Aaron, and maybe you could confirm, I know that you kind of made some drafts. I know that we had our eyes on drafts. I know that I was able to see some drafts. I think that the drafts were sent out to numerous people in the community. Is that correct? In regards to staff and to school committee? So this was not, you know, I, I just want to make sure everybody knows this was not Aaron doing this without any input from others. It was really, I think, a really nice collaborative effort using other handbooks. I know you reached out to a lot of different districts to kind of get a sense of what are other districts doing, what's working, what's not working. So I really appreciate your time and energy on this. I'm not sure if anybody else has any comments or...
I just had a couple of questions. Aaron, again, I, I just want to say too, thank you for all your work on this. I know you and I have talked for, since probably you've become AD about some of this stuff. So to see all the work and effort you put in is greatly appreciated. Just to clarify, this is the first time that we have something like this? As thorough as this? Okay. If it voted on tonight, this goes into effect for the next season of sports, would you say?
Yeah, I would say it would be the next, the next season, which would be November 30th.
Okay. And this is something that all coaches have to sign every year?
Yeah, they would sign it at the coaches' meeting before the season started.
Okay, perfect.
Sheri also, that, so that you know, and the rest of the committee, that, you know, anything to do with the word handbook is always a working document. So there's changes, additional language, deletion of language, update on XYZ. So just, you know, like all our handbooks that we do, it's, it's, it's done and it'll become a yearly event. So like we always do, we'll review it in June, request the school committee. There's no changes to the handbook. Great. We just, we just changed the title to the next season and we move on. And I agree, Carolyn, to your comment. You know, Aaron gets pulled in 20,000 different directions right now to get this done with the support of Ethan. Those coaches who decided to comment on it, and again, they can continue to comment on it. This is, this is a, a, a document that is always ever-changing. We'll start and then when the time period comes to change again, we'll go through that process.
And to that point, I mean, I met with a coach today and we, we sat down and discussed a few things in their language. And then I, I talked to him about, you know, at the end of the year, let's sit down, you know, be, be part of the group that sits down and goes over the Athletic Handbook and the Coach's Handbook and go through it. I mean, the more coaches' input we have in it, the better it's gonna be. So I welcome that from anybody.
It sounds great. Because this is a vote, if I'm not mistaken, I, oh, sorry, Dinesh, go ahead.
So just a couple of comments. The first one, while it might sound silly or nitpicky, I, I think we want to highlight early on in this somewhere that the term "coaches" refers to, to anybody in that type of position, coaches, assistant coaches, or I don't know what you'd call it, an unstipend volunteer or something like that.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to highlight that, that it applies across the board to anybody that's in that type of position. And the second thing I wanted to highlight on page seven, when we're talking about the, the activity of boosters, I, I think, and I, I may have these facts wrong, but I, but I believe there was a point at some moment in our, in our past where we had those unstipend volunteers who were actually getting compensation from boosters and that, that simply can't happen. So I, I think we need to highlight in there that there can't be any, any form of compensation given from boosters to coaches, assistant coaches, or, you know, unstipend volunteers, whatever, whatever the phrases we're on use.
Yeah, so to, to address that, that's a great point. The volunteer coaches receive from me a, a letter of, quote, "Congratulations and appointment as a volunteer." We do that for two reasons. A, it protects them as an employee and B, it protects us as an employer. And when you get a letter that you're a volunteer, you shouldn't be receiving compensation from anybody. You know, if somebody wants to take you out for a drink or something, that, that's totally different, but we shouldn't be.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about within a reason. I don't care if they go out for drinks with people, but, but, but I think it should be codified. I think it should be in here that they're not allowed to receive any compensation outside of the occasional social drink or whatever. I mean, if they want to have a pancake breakfast, go ahead. I mean, we're not, we're not idiots, but at the same time, there, there can't be a, hey, we're slipping this guy 500 bucks for coaching. You just can't have that connection.
So Dinesh, are you thinking that it should be written?
I think it should be.
In the handbook?
Yeah, 100%. I think it has to be.
So there's two amendments to the written, the first amendment, as noted, both noted by Dinesh, to clarify and codify assistant coaches and volunteer coaches that are recognized. And then two, to codify that the idea behind volunteer coaches within the district is that they are not compensated by any parties associated with Norton Public Schools.
Right. And, and surprising nobody, there's a potential third adjustment as well. And this is more of a, this is more of a question. I, I would welcome people's thoughts on this. So the conflict resolution ends at the AD and the, and the principal. And Aaron, I don't, I don't mean this with any kind of, you know, I don't mean with any malice towards you or anything like that, but
That's fine.
I would think that in a normal situation, the AD and the principal are, are fairly, are in a fairly close relationship. They work very close together on an ongoing basis. I, I wonder if we want to allow for another step beyond that, if, if there is still no resolution to the student or students' parents liking to that point. And I, I'm not saying that we have to. I'm saying, what do you guys think?
So there's gonna be two responses to that. The first response...
Yes and no.
Well, I, you know, I might be opining on this in the future, so I don't want to commit myself to the politics of this answer. I've been listening to that all week. I, any situation that happens with an in-house appointed coach, in-house meaning a member of the Norton Teachers Association, will require the rights under the contract. If in fact, it's a accusation of some sort or needing to come to a resolution, that would go through a process in itself. That's happened actually in the past.
What's, Joe, can you give like, what's an example of?
An example would be that there was a yelling and screaming situation between a coach and a player. It was found that the, the complaint came forward and Aaron has to look into the complaint. He looks into that complaint and he has to give that... into the complaint. He looks into that complaint and he has to give that coach, because there's the potential for disciplinary action, rights under the contract. So he makes it, he makes a, he has the hearing. In most cases, he would have the hearing along with the principal because the principal still oversees the entire school and everybody who's employed under Ed reform. That principal says, I've made my hearing, I've spoken to my AD, I gave due process rights, including union representation, if they so choose, and I am X, I'm suspending the coach, I'm terminating the coach. That automatically would kick up to my level. That would go to the next level in the process. That level in the process is I give the employee all of their rights and so on and so forth. And after that hearing of giving them the secondary hearing, because let's say it was a termination, then they can take it actually from me to you. And from there, the potential to arbitration. That's the process.
Okay, what about, what about the other, the other way?
Their employee, the other way is employees, staff that do not work for us, they are employees at will.
What, what I, what I mean by that is if, if the conflict is, is the, the resolution is, is not to the, the parent or the student's satisfaction. So it's not an issue where we're going to terminate somebody, but there's some, some conflict. And, and honestly, I don't, I don't know if, if Aaron has thoughts on this, but I don't know what that conflict might be. But I'm just thinking we should allow for the possibility that it gets to a point where they say, okay, this has not been resolved to my, to my satisfaction. And I'm not saying that it has to go their way, but that they, that they say, you know what, I still don't feel like I'm getting a, a fair trial, if you will, with, with the?
Any, any parent, any parent at any point can make, can, can take an employee to court. That employee would be, you know, they could go that process. But the process pretty much ends either with the superintendent on a decision of an employee at will, or in the process of arbitration with, if, if in fact, they were challenging that they didn't like the decision that I went along with the parent's comment.
Right. So, and, and I very much could be overthinking this. But I, I'm trying to think of a good, a good example where there would be a, a conflict that would kind of get kicked up to, to the level of the AD and the, and the principal that would not go the way of the student slash parents, but would still, still be something that we may want to adjudicate, for lack of a better, better term.
There have been court injunctions that have been done against school systems by parents as a way to stop an action of the administration.
Okay.
That has happened. It's actually happened in the wonderful sport of hockey, quite a number of times, actually, in my days of coaching.
You know those hockey moms, right, Sherry?
So it would be very much in the same way with the employee who works for us, as if it was in the classroom. It's a process that require, that will give them union rights, that will go through that process. And at some point, the parent is no longer involved in the decision because the decision, if disciplinary, is in fact, private under, under the law. So for example, if I put somebody out on paid administrative leave, people automatically think somebody got fired. That may not be so. That may be that somebody, something's being investigated. And those people are still getting compensated and, and so on, and somebody else is doing the job. So the process for a parent wanting to get the answer that they want may not actually ever be known to them unless they, they decide as a parent to take it through a court process.
Okay. I, I, I think I'm probably overthinking this. And in any case, it shouldn't stop the, the handbook from going forward. It's, it's a good piece of work in general. So I, I, I'll, I'll drop that last, last part. But the other two things I think we should include.
And Dines, I, I can, I mean, to speak to that, there's definitely parents who, I've been reached by a number of parents when, when things have happened. So I think that, you know, and Aaron knows that parents definitely come to school committee members, you know, whether they're friends of yours or whatever, they just need somebody to, to vent to or talk to. It definitely happens now. There's no doubt.
And, and I don't want to open it up to, hey, my kid's not getting enough playing time. I want to keep it up to the school committee. You know, I want it to be something legitimate. But I, I think probably right now, the, the move is probably to move forward without it. And we can just kind of table it and think about it. And like you said, it's a working document. It's not something we can't come and revisit at a later date. So.
I think something too, Dines, that has happened more. And again, I, I really think that we had talked about this when we did Dr. Baeta's evaluation, that I, I feel like he just kind of puts people, the right people in the right places to really, in Norton, to be really wise and successful without sort of a, a really lot of money in our district. And I think really focusing on the athletic director position was important. And for a long time, we, that was kind of a band-aided position. It was just putting somebody in there to kind of do the, do the sort of initial work or the necessary work, but really not do the job. And I think, Aaron, when you came on board, I, I really do feel like as an athletic director, you are present, you are at athletic events, families see you, you engage with our student athletes. And I, I do think from my own personal experience and hearing from others, that you are sort of much, you, you're able to hear parents' concerns much more quickly and, and readily than years past. And I think in a lot of ways, Dines, that has really kind of diffused a lot of the concerns that we used to hear from parents.
Right. And I, I fully understand that. And, and this is not an Aaron situation. I think Aaron's great. Absolutely love the guy. But at the same time.
We're patting you on the back, Aaron. Can you feel them?
Right. But the, and, and again, I, and I, and I do want to move forward without, without this, you know, kind of rehashing this because I think it's probably something to talk about later. But, but at the same time, when, when we're reviewing these documents, we need to think about not just today, but tomorrow. The rest, call Aaron tonight and say, hey, you're our new manager if you want the job. You know?
Totally get it.
He'll tell you that they stunk this year. They may want to look to make a change. They call Aaron and say, come on over. You're, you're it. And he leaves tomorrow. So.
Aaron never leave us for them. Come on.
But you got to remember, when you, when you're looking at these documents and you're thinking about these things, it's, it's not simply, okay, how would, how would we adjudicate in the situations that we're in right now with the people we have right now? It's, it's kind of a, while it's a working document, you want to think about it as a forever document. Say, okay, what happens, you know, next year, the year after? The players may change, quite frankly. So we can, we can move on. I think it's.
So I just, I want to just clarify one thing. You know, Joe, in your example, and I know it wasn't just that example, but if, if there's an issue with a coach, that, that review is only for their coaching position, not so much their employment as a whole, for, depending on what the issue is, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I would say if it's the employment issue that would go directly to you bypassing the principals.
No, that's not, it still starts with your direct supervisor.
Okay.
Unless it's a situation, for example, of, you know?
Hurting a player or something like that?
Like inappropriate situation, then those usually come directly to me.
Okay.
Uh, just to end with two thoughts. First, the idea behind this document is the positivity of what it is to be and what we expect and want, our philosophy of athlete, of athletes, and in this particular case, our coaches. I think the second part is, one of the things that I've always been critical of, as the committee knows, is this kind of generalization of something not going the way somebody wants to happen. This begins the process as if it was in the classroom. You need specification. People need to be told, I'm not happy about A, B, and C. You know, playing time is usually connected to that discussion. Or, you know, the way somebody was treated or yelled at and screamed, or any, any of that type of stuff. It needs to be a, a direct act between the student athlete and the coach, the student athlete, parent, coach, and the AD. And then if it needs to kick up, it kicks up to the principal's office. That should always be the process in any, anything that we do in the same way, like I said earlier. Parent, student, student to, you know, you hope at the high school level, I would hope at the high school level anyways, that a student is going to see their teacher and saying, I really don't understand why you marked this wrong, or I, I really, you know, X, Y, Z. Then it maybe becomes a parent issue. Maybe then it becomes an administrative. I'll leave it at that. But it is a good starting working document.
I agree. I mean, I think it's a really good start. And thanks, Aaron, for kind of putting it together. Thanks for sending it out for comments. It sounds like you had sent it out to our coaches for comments, too. We really want to make this inclusive so that everybody kind of has interest in it. So thanks for doing that. Because this is a vote, I will open it up to our attendees. Not sure if anybody has any comments or questions before we vote on this, if you wanted to write it in the Q and A.
We don't have any questions, Madam Chair. We have Peter Wiggins with two comments. And Peter just says that our Norton has some great coaches, they're doing a good job teaching the students right and wrong, and they are doing a good job. And I've seen them on the field lots of times. And then later, he commented that, Mr. Summer, you've done a great job as AD for the Lancers, and thank you for the media pass for me to cover the games on the Peter channel. That was a great idea, by the way. Thank you for doing that, Aaron.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So we can motion to vote. So we are voting with the?
Two amendments.
Changes with the?
The two amendments. Yep.
As stated?
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve the coaches handbook with the amendments as stated? Second, thanks. All in favor, Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dines?
Yes.
And Carolyn's a yes. Thank. We will move on to the discussion and vote on Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which is November 25th, 2020, a full day or early release.
Madam Chair, at this, at this time, the calendar isn't clear. So I'd like, as you know, the school calendar is connected to a decision you folks make. My recommendation is that Monday would be a remote day currently, currently. The Tuesday would be the Tuesday, Thursday students, meaning they don't have school on Thursday. And Wednesday would be the Wednesday, Friday. So I'm recommending that Wednesday before Thanksgiving be a full day for the district.
Any comments, questions, discussions? Are we seeing any comments from attendees? Seeing none, I'm, I'm ready to vote. So is there a motion to approve the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, November 25th, as a full, full day?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Dan?
Hi.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dines?
No, give him a half day.
And Carolyn is a yes.
Malia?
Thank you guys, man.
I know why he voted, Malia. Good job.
Hey, Malia, I tried.
Malia, I tried so hard for you. Awful. Malia, that is bad politics. That's what we need to stop in DC. He was bought out.
He did try for you, Malia. And we are going to move on to the vote to move the October 22nd, 2020 school committee meeting to October 29th, 2020. Dr. Baeta.
Yes, just a recommendation, since we're meeting this week, that gives us information to be received by you by Monday afternoon, prior to the school committee meeting of all the data points that we're looking at. The NTA will hopefully be able to share teacher survey with us. We have the parent meetings, we have the parent surveys. That, and the parent meetings would be the digital learning, the academy, the hybrid, and our special education 504 families. And also a bulleted line item from every department director and the principals as well on the models, and specifically for Marty and Jen on the, on the, uh, Dirty Digital Learning Academy. So that will get everybody data. We meet on the 29th. We will probably not have too many other items on that, except for a second reading of that policy.
And I think it really does align with the date of our six weeks. We seriously are going to have a deep discussion about sort of where we're at. We'll continue to watch our numbers. I want to do a, a quick shout out to Christian Zainer, who is the Board of Health agent in Norton. He's been really helpful. And Sherry, I know you've been working with him a lot, but really keeping us up to date on our numbers and, and where we're at in Norton. So, but we will have that discussion. So any comments or questions about moving our school committee meeting to October 29th? Seeing none?
Joe, I just want to mention real quick, and just an FYI with Christian, I did talk with him tonight. He is going to start to share the information that he sends to us to Facebook, because there's been a lot of comments on there that, that, you know, people think it's the kids in schools that's causing the uptick in Norton, or it's Wheaton College that is. And that is in case, that is not, not accurate information. So, you know, the spreadsheet that I have created and share with you guys every week, you know, it shows week to week. And, and Christian thinks that coming from him on Facebook, Facebook would be a good option. So starting on Monday, he will share that on Facebook, and then we can share it to other sites as well. He'll do it through the Norton Alert Facebook page. And Joe, it would, it would be helpful, I think, if, if there was, you know, really just that on the 29th, because I do think that's going to take a lot of time.
Yeah, it would be that. I just want to do that in the second reading. That's all.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. But I'm just hoping there's not a whole lot more so we can really focus on, you know, how we move forward.
Great if we could start at six, instead of 6:30. But I don't know if that's a problem for Dines. That's, he's usually the one that's.
That actually works for me fine, yeah.
So we'll publish it at 6 o'clock. So we just need it.
It would have been, would have been more of an issue if I was still going to Boston and working from home. I could, I could potentially do it earlier than that, to be honest with you.
Okay. Six, I think, is good, lives, gives people time.
So we vote, so is there a motion to vote to move the October 22nd school committee meeting to October 29th, 2020 with a 6:00 PM start?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Um, all in favor, Dan?
Yes.
Dines?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And Carolyn's a yes. Dr. Baeta, any other business?
I do. I'd like to turn it over to Matt for a very simple announcement and my gratitude to what he's announcing tonight.
Hi, thank you. So we have received a generous $2,000 donation from the Kyle Bishop Memorial Fund. These funds will be used to offset fees for students who are struggling to pay those fees. So we, we have received that and we're good, going to put that to good use moving forward.
Shout out, shout out to Steve, who actually sent me a text message and just said, is there any, anything that you guys really need? And I said, well, here's the uptick that we're seeing, working with Vinnie Cersei, we're seeing some kids that the SATs and the APs and this and that. And we talked about less money than this. And then just a, just a sincere thank you to Steve Bishop and, and sending that on, on behalf of his son.
Steve's a great guy. It's a, it's a great fundraiser. And, you know, this is a great way for, for all of us to just take a minute and remember his son. Steve does a lot for kids in this community.
There's no doubt. So thank you on behalf of all of our students. Really appreciate that. I think in these moments of kind of craziness, it's so nice to know that there are people who really want to continue to support our students who are also struggling. So thank you.
I just want to actually say as well, I actually talked to Steve on the day of the golf tournament. And what's impressive is they had to pretty much scale back the tournament. So it's, it's very appreciative that he could still find some funds to donate because that, that tournament, I believe, was back in July, if I'm, I might be incorrect. But I'm talking to him on the day of, it was, it was pretty sporadic and they couldn't do a lot. So I definitely appreciate still being able to give back. So it's, it's well appreciated.
I have nothing else, Madam Chair.
Um, I just wanted to add one thing. We had, and I don't even know what President Hanno calls it, a?
It's the Wheaton Community Council.
The Wheaton Community Council. So we were able to check in with President Hanno at Wheaton College, and Dr. Baeta was on the call, I was on the call. And I do have to say that they are just an impressive college, that they really are on top of their plan for COVID, sort of safety. They have, and please correct me, I'm sure, Dr. Baeta, you'll be able to correct me, if I'm not mistaken, they had one positive student and one student who was on isolation, if I'm not mistaken. They had one positive faculty member or staff member, and then one positive that actually turned out to be a false positive. So it is, I, I want to sort of put that out there. It is not Wheaton College that is driving the numbers of COVID up in Norton. They are getting tested twice a week. If I'm not mistaken, it's faculty, staff and students twice a week. So they are really being cautious and they, their students have been impressive, really. If we, you know, I don't know about anybody else, but I see them around town. They're always wearing masks. Even if they're walking alone on the sidewalk in front of the campus, they have masks on. It's been nice to see how engaged as a community they are to really keep their community safe and keep their students on campus. So just wanted to make sure I said that, you know, Dr. Hanno is really an engaged community member in Norton and he really did pull together a nice team of people in Norton to have a conversation with. So it was appreciated. But I have nothing else, anyone? Dines is against full days before Thanksgiving.
If it wasn't during COVID times, I would have agreed with you, Dines.
I think I would agree as well. We need our kids in school. We need them in school. Is there a motion to adjourn our school committee for October 15th?
So moved.
Second?
Second. All in favor, Dan?
Yes.
Dines?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thanks, everybody. We will see you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, everybody. Good night, everybody.